I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Alright. Introduction of members. I'll start with you Jane.
Jane Reggio, the town of Millville.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Erin Binaco, Millville.
Ann Keith, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Charles Dunton, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Maya Gagne, Student Council President.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pillgallerani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Anne Maia, Student Representative.
So I have our update from the high school. Yesterday, BMR High hosted the largest track meet ever to be hosted at BMR. It was the Division III State Middle School Track Meet, and it was the first time that states were held at BMR. So a great step for our school. Last week, from the 9th through the 11th, we had thirty-five eighth graders along with four high school teachers go on the Washington DC trip. A couple of them I talked to that got back today, had a great time. And we also had our seventh grade Step Up Day just yesterday, and it was definitely a success. It was way more involved than Step Up Days we've had in the past. We had seventh grade students meet with assigned high school mentors. So we actually had a large turnout of fifty upperclassmen who volunteered to mentor these seventh graders coming into the high school to really show them the ropes and help them get their footing in a big new school that's unfamiliar to them. So they had tours of the building, they heard advice from current eighth graders who are in the same position that they're gonna be in next year, and were also introduced to the eighth grade teachers that they'll have next year to start to internalize some familiar faces. They also had a Q&amp;A session with student council officers and heard words of wisdom from them. So we are getting ready for our end of the year activities here at BMR. Tomorrow, we've got our school-wide bingo. Everyone gets together in the caf and plays bingo. We also have a karaoke bash next week and along with an outdoor nitro ball tournament. Fortunately, I won't be there next week, but I'm sure the person who's emceeing, Mr. Francisco, is gonna do a fantastic job. I'm so excited to be going to Girl State. I do leave on Saturday. I just got my room and city assignment yesterday. I will be in Liberty City and I will be housed in Core Hall. I attended an orientation last week online, and I was able to touch base with some different people that I know from around the state who are also going, and I'm very excited about that. And what's interesting is a lot of them are from MASC, from SUCO. So it's very great to see the intersection between different student leadership activities around the Commonwealth. And I have a friend from Minnetrog and a friend from Medfield who are going to be in my dorm building. Once again, very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to be representing our school at Girl State and hoping to bring new insights and ideas back with me.
Maya, when you are in a major office someday that you are elected to, please remember this for all of us.
I will, I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we'll take out of order now. School Committee, Item A, Student Recognition Special Olympics.
Thank you. Tim, could you put up our photo presentation? Don't we have like the Olympics on? So we're just gonna show you some pictures, I just wanna, before we introduce our students. And I want to thank the staff that was there today for all of the photos that we're able to share with you today. And to Ms. Deogo, if she's here, for putting this together. So you can look at these photos, but we are incredibly proud to recognize and celebrate some of our most inspiring student athletes tonight. On May 30th, twenty-four of our students from across our schools represented the Blackstone Millville Regional School District at our second annual Special Olympics, held in partnership with Bellingham Public Schools. And we are so proud of our students. They showed up as BMR Chargers and showed everyone what it meant to be Charger Strong. Each building, as you see these pictures, took the time to recognize these amazing athletes with a send-off. They decorated, they were cheering, they each had signs, and they were celebrating them on their day. The halls of each school building were filled with pride, positivity, and unity as our students headed out to compete. And every one of our buildings sent our students off. I want to give a special thank you to four of our high school volunteers. We had Faith Lavoy, Maddie Healy, Avery DeCosta, and Seth Cades. And Seth actually took on the role of our Charger Horse that day. It was a little warm in that uniform. Thank you for stepping up and supporting our students. Your presence and encouragement that day really made a difference. Maybe next year, we can actually bring our newest BMR community member captain to join us. And last but not least, while we watch these photos, I want to send a huge thank you out to our staff for your participation and support during the Special Olympics. You played a huge role in making the day a meaningful and successful experience for all. It was truly inspiring to see the care, energy, encouragement you brought to the event. And because of your efforts, our students were able to shine and celebrate their abilities. There's our Charger Horse. He made it for the start of it, got a little warm later on. I think that's all of it, yep. So we're gonna call up each of our members, our student members, and when they come up, I am gonna ask the staff that works with them to come up as well. We'll have a little certificate for you and a little takeaway, but we'd like, Dr. DeFalco is gonna take some photos of the students with our staff. And I'm sorry, staff, you're gonna have to listen to the names in alphabetical order, they're not by class. So first, Evan DeMa. James Barzaga.
That's a boy, damn.
There you are. Well, we're happy you did it for us.
I'm not sure if Orion Blank is here. Did Orion come tonight? Orion didn't break up. Logan Bratt. I don't think he's here. I didn't see him, and AJ Cologne participated that day. Hannah Pringle.
Look at the camera bud. That's you?
He says read it. Yeah, he said read it.
So pretty. Oh, and you got your medal and everything.
I'll need to get your picture. I'm not sure if he's here, but Jacob Flouet. Is Jacob here? No, but he participated, so. Was Len's Gentey, did Len come tonight?
Nope.
How about Cole? Jacob? I think I saw Kyle here, Kyle Cangetti. Where is Mr. Kyle?
Beauty.
Brayden Markle. I think I saw Brayden.
We'll give him his.
Okay, you wanna take this from him or go bring it? We have another one of our high school students I don't think is here tonight, Tristan McGregor. Another one of our high school students, Dylan Patterson, who is not here tonight. Mrs. Gallagher, their teacher back there, wait, Mrs. Gallagher's, yeah, I'll make sure she does. Lincoln Peters. And our last two students I don't believe are here tonight. How old are they? Is Jasper Rossi here? Did Jasper come? So again, it was actually a wonderful, it was absolutely wonderful event. We're glad the parents who came. We will definitely be doing this again next year. And I will have to say a shout-out to Mr. John, who probably, last year, he probably ran about fifteen miles with the kids. This year was a little less, but.
Yeah, sure. Alright, now we'll move on to Kevin Burgess' Eagle Scout presentation. Kevin?
Hello. So, you may have the copy of it, I have a little speech of the essay, of the presentation I'll be doing tonight. This is Connor Raymond, who's the Senior Patrol Leader of the Troop. This is Mr. Wild, he's the Scout Master and my Eagle Scout Mentor. So, good evening, School Committee. I'm Kevin Burgess with Troop One Blackstone and an Eagle Candidate. I'd like to thank you all for having me tonight, especially the teachers, principals, and scouts in the audience who came to support me tonight. Before I dive into my proposal, I'm gonna talk about my leadership and experiences, so you know a little bit more about me. First off, I hold around five leadership positions inside the troop, those being Den Chief, Troop Guide, Chaplainade, and Leadership Advisor. I'm a leader inside the Boy Scout Honor Society known as the Order of the Arrow. I'm a kneemat for them. Over the past three years with the troop, I've been excelling above the average scout. I've done tons of camping and training in the troop. I go to two weeks of summer camp in the beautiful woods of Yaugu. Next year, I will be going to the National Jamboree at the Summit Betchel's Reserve. During the last three years, I have done a lot of community service and lived by the Scout Law and Oath. You can ask anyone here to support me tonight. Before I move on to the actual proposal, do we have any questions? Nope. This project will be focusing on the upkeep of the deck out in the cafeteria. This deck is loved by Frederick Hartnett's students. The deck was done by Eagle Scout with Troop One. This deck has seen wear and exposure to the elements over the past eight years. My project will be focusing on fixing up the deck. Structurally, the deck is fine. I would power wash the deck to get out old stains. After I stain the deck multiple times to protect the wood, I would also be replacing questionable floorboards that have seen their time with this project. I would also be replacing any worn-out screws and spindles. After this is done, I would be replacing the picnic tables that have seen their time. And once this is all done, I'd be beautifying the area right to the deck. I would level the dirt against the school and plant drought-resistant shrubs. With the bushes, I would also be putting gravel around the bushes instead of mulch to minimize future costs. Around the struts of the deck, I'd be putting more dirt to fill in the erosion that has happened. Last but not least, if I get permission from the janitorial team, I would mount smaller... Wait a minute, I got lost.
That's okay.
I'll be mounting a smaller trash can on the deck to help minimize the constant flow in and out. The materials for this project cost about $1,500, and I'll be fundraising an extra $500 for futures costs to ensure it maintains quality and safety for future generations. Any questions?
Yes, I do. So you mentioned that you're gonna create a fund?
Yes, I'll be creating a fund and working with the janitorial team and the groundkeeper to ensure that after I finish this project, it'll be maintained in the future before either we have another Eagle Scout who would be willing to expand it more and help out with it, or the school will have to start spending their own money.
Kevin, can you just let the committee know that in the nature of an Eagle Scout project, how it works? You do it, you project manage it, and then who takes care of it after, if you can let the committee know?
So basically, when we're looking for a project, either the troop recommends one or the scout himself or herself would come and look for a project at different organizations. Over the past two years I've been at this school, I've loved the deck, we've been using it quite frequently. I know somewhere, then after a little, I noticed it was an Eagle Scout project done about eight years ago in the summertime. So then I'd contact Mrs. Remka. Me and her have been discussing this project for a couple months now. After, I've been working on the paperwork for a couple months. Once the Eagle Scout comes in, does the fundraising, does the project, we did that to help minimize future costs and maintain, and it's supposed to maintain long enough, so we don't have to come back. After, whatever beneficiary we go to, they would be responsible for it after. So we don't have to redo the project, and we would have to minimize the cuts down of costs. Any other questions?
Alright.
When would you like to start your project?
That's in another paragraph somewhere here. I'd be starting fundraising in the span of whenever this gets approved. After I get approval, if I get approval from this committee, next week I'll be going to my troop committee. Then I'll have to send it out to either district or council for scouting. Then they will review all my paperwork, they'll send it back, and then I'll be able to then start fundraising. With the heavy cost, it will take me probably about a month or two to fundraise the cost. After that, I would then be starting, so I'm planning on either late July or early August. And my goal is to get this done by end, the early September.
It's been eight years since this built, huh?
Yep.
When I was here, and Erin, you were here.
I'm the guy who pulled the permit for it. As many of that comes around, and I was there on a Saturday morning with those guys, me and predecessor, he did a phenomenal job. And it was a great group effort, and it's great to see that you're gonna put that effort into keeping it, bringing it back up to snuff and keeping it preserved for longevity.
Any other questions? Next paragraph will be fundraising. For fundraising, luckily, we live in a relatively small town with a lot of caring local businesses, some being Scouts/Eagle Scout Ran. They are very generous towards local scouting, and we have a lot of caring lumber stores and hardware stores that will be asked for small donations and materials. I will also be running can drives and partnering with local stores to sell candy bars and relevant things. Obviously, that's a couple of the main ways to get materials and money. For the sake of time, I would not present all the fundraising ways I'll be doing it. Luckily, most of the cost is materials, which is way easier to get donated than to purchase with money. Overall, this project will be running over the summer months of possibly end of July to August. This whole process would be going, hopefully done in a week. Throughout this process, if this does get approved from this committee, I will be keeping you guys informed over email. Do we have any questions about fundraising?
I'll ask, do you have a, have you, do you have a list of materials that you need?
I have a pretty good printed-out list of what I would need. Any other questions?
Can you get that list to Matt, and have Matt get that list to me?
I have it over there, I'll show you it after. Moving on, how this will benefit the school in the long run. In the long term, this can benefit the school significantly. As mentioned above, redoing the parts that need to help, it will help preserve the deck for future students of the district. Also raising an extra $500, this money will be designated to help preserve the deck for several years. With that, it will minimize the cost the district will have to spend on the deck and divert it to other needs. With restoring this project, it will ensure students can enjoy the deck any day that is nice out and the school does not have much to worry about the deck for a long period of time. Thank you, School Committee, teachers, scouts, who have allowed me to be able here tonight. And thank you for people who came out to support me. Do we have any questions? Okay, that's my speech.
So you're looking for us to authorize you to proceed?
I'll make a motion to authorize Kevin Burgess' Eagle Scout project for the deck adjacent to the cafeteria.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Matt, seconded by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
After, I'll need a few signatures for the paperwork.
Sure. If you want, do you want to leave it with us?
What?
Or just, he could leave it with Matt. We'll get that done pronto.
Sure. I'll be tomorrow.
Do I need a, yeah, yes.
Yes. No, 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 I didn't know if you wanted to.
Oh, yes, yeah. Let me ask you, Matt, are they gonna wait for that signature?
I can bring it to them.
Okay. Okay, next, recognition of retirees. And some of these names can't be possible. It's a school with them. They can't be retiring teachers already. This is Superintendent.
Sure, thank you. So this is always a bittersweet part of our year, we say goodbye, or see you later, to our friends who have put so much time, effort, and energy into not just our students, but our school community, our staff, our families, and have contributed so much. In your packet, there is a brief overview, and I just want to thank Jackie for putting these together. She did a great job of kind of capturing just a summary of each one of our retirees this year. And we don't have all of them with us tonight, but we do have a few. And I'm going to ask them, they can come up together, but we'll talk about them separately. This strength in numbers, ladies, so if you want to come up together, that's fine. And as it is tradition in BMR, our retirees select a book that they would like to donate to the library of the building which they're retiring from. And so if we want to start, Patty, with you, because you've had me hanging on many words on your First Chapter Fridays. But if you want to start and share maybe the book that you selected and talk a little bit about why?
Sure. The book is "The Remarkable Journey of Coyote Sunrise" by Dan Gammonheart, one of my favorite authors. And he is a former teacher librarian, like most children's authors are. And like Dr. DeFalco said, I do First Chapter Friday, every Friday with the kids, just to pique their interest in a book. And then they have an option to borrow that book from me, so that, you know, just to read for pleasure. So it's a story of a girl whose mother and sister die in a horrible accident. Her father can't bear to be at home anymore, so he outfits a bus, a school bus, and they go cross-country, never to return home. But eventually, she does try to convince him to go home for a specific reason, which I will not reveal, so it doesn't ruin the book.
Chapter two.
Yeah, that'll be chapter two.
Patty?
Alright, well, I teach fourth grade, and I have, since I've been here at BMR for about eight or nine years. And so I chose Tales of a Fourth Grade Nothing. It's a classic story that I remember reading when I was a kid. And we read it in fourth grade now, and again, for the sheer pleasure of just reading for pleasure. We don't ask, we obviously discuss it, but there's no essays, there's nothing attached to it. It's just read it, let's talk about it, let's laugh with it, let's really get into it. And the students absolutely love it. They love it. And so surprisingly, there wasn't a copy here in the book, in the library. So we needed one in the library. So and also, to Patty's point, when we finished the story, the students, they loved it so much, and this is not a, that's a true statement, that now they want to read other stories. You know, Fudge is the little brother of the main character, and they want to read more stories about Fudge, and so now they're reading more stories about Fudge. And then, oh, Sheila the Great, she's also in this. So we just really turned them on to a lot of different kinds. So they, we just really turned them on to a lot of different kinds of stories and they, they read them all now. So now they're reading a lot of different stories, for fun.
My book actually, I came to it, um, by reaching out to Patty. And because, one of my favorite books is called The Math Curse, and they already have it here. And I used to read it to my students and it's just all about, oh, math is everywhere, the curse, the curse. And so I knew they already had it. And then, there's also an individual who left professional football, he used to work for the, uh, play for the Ravens. And, um, he left playing professional football to become a math educator at MIT. But that book was more for high school, so I went to Patty and I said, I'm stuck. So she recommended.
The Miscalculations of Lightning Girl.
And so I read through it and it's about this girl that's stuck, struck by lightning. And she suddenly becomes a math genius. And she's in middle school. And, um, while she's gained this incredible mathematic knowledge, she has some trouble kind of getting along with, um, other middle schoolers and understanding, um, the kind of personal dynamic that goes on. And so the book is about her, um, kind of learning how to, um, be a middle schooler. And, um, and also has this great math, um, intelligence. So I just thought it was a really cute story, so that's why I chose that.
Great, thanks, Jim.
Anything the committee would like to add?
I would, I have a question. I would like to know what you're going to do with all of your free time.
You want to go first?
After many, many years of September to June and, you know.
Travel during a non-school vacation.
Well, a couple of years ago, I started decorating cookies. So I've started my, a little cookie business that I'm hoping, you've had some, Dani. So I'm hoping to just kind of put more time into that.
Is this online?
Because it's fun.
Online business?
Um, it's on Instagram. Patty Bakes.
Plug.
Put a little plug out there.
What was the name of it again?
Patty Bakes.
Patty Bakes.
A little louder?
We should have, we should have known this and had some here.
Had some cookies.
Big cookies for your retirement. Well, that's fun.
Awesome. I'm gonna spend some time, um, visiting and spending time with my granddaughter in New York. And I also have, um, some family members that I'm gonna be, uh, taking care of, so.
Very nice. I wish you all the best.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for.
If you find yourself driving by, just because the car takes you there, you know, we do always need.
Cookies.
Cookies.
Cookies and substitutes.
I was gonna let her know, July 6th is our next meeting.
You gotta be on that calendar way more, way ahead.
But it is rare that people give the kind of time that you have given to this district. And I, I know Patty the best, but, um, thank you. There's always been a great respect and a great commitment that's seen every single day. So, thank you, it takes a lot.
Oh, yeah, it's a Sunday. July 6th, we have a meeting on?
Yes, July 6th.
We have, Jason listed.
What's the matter?
July 6th is a Sunday.
You cannot put your cookie order in while we're.
I don't know, I'm looking at the pictures going. I love cookie.
Jackie put these together?
Twenty-four years, many years.
Yeah, Mr. McCormick?
Are we gonna mention their names, that, those people that aren't here?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. McCormick is, uh, retiring. So he will be wrapping up his tenure with us, uh, next week.
Thirty years and six months. Thirty years.
Sue Desolates is also retiring, uh, after 26 years and nine months. Um, as an instructional assistant and also, um, an admin assistant, Jill, I think with you.
For a short time, yep.
Yeah, she did, uh, some really good work in our student service office. So they will very much be missed. And I can say, uh, I would spend time in particularly Patty and Kathy's classroom. And Jill was a great thought partner and, uh, as an instructional coach, but also as a math interventionist. This is, um, a tremendous loss. Like tremendous, tremendous loss to our school community. It's great for you, um, but you are all leaving just huge shoes to fill. And you will be missed very much.
Thank you.
Um, we do have some flowers for you. Does anyone want the red?
Random, right? Thank you, thanks so much, appreciate it.
All right, we will go back to consent, Agenda A, warrants. Take a motion to approve the warrants. Motion made by Tara Locken.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any further discussion?
Um, I just want to add that we have a new copy of our minutes, so it was emailed to us.
Okay.
Versus what is in our packet that was delivered on. It was emailed today.
All righty. Uh, all those in favor of the warrants? All right, saying aye. Uh, any opposed? The ayes have it. And, I have our copies of any warrants. Okay, a motion to approve the updated minutes, as Ellen pointed out. We got that emailed.
They were updated before we voted, so I don't know that.
Well, this is a separate vote.
No, we're doing, he separated the vote.
He just did warrants.
Okay.
Uh, motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Tara S., seconded by Carrie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, well, uh, public forum. Anyone from the public would like to address this?
Anyone in the back?
That was a good strategy right there. Clear the meeting out and then no one from the public's left, right? Okay, school building project, we took care of that at the, took that vote earlier, so policy updates. Mr. Catalano.
Yes, um, so we do have a few policy updates that we've been working on, uh, for quite some time. And we're, uh, prepared to bring them to the full committee, um, for review and possible vote.
Do you want me to run through them?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, no problem. In your packet, uh, you have, um, the policies that Matt is referring to, they are IJND policies. Uh, and there's one GBE at the end that we'll talk about. Uh, these are all anchored in technology or, um, personal use of technology, school use of technology. And you will see, uh, that we, um, highlighted in yellow the changes, uh, for each. And, um, struck out the language that we are recommending we remove. Um, and to Matt's, uh, point, the policy subcommittee, we've spent a lot of time on these ones. We've come back to each of these, uh, quite a few times and had a lot of rich spirited dialogue, uh, about each one, uh, which is always good and healthy. Um, and so the first, um, is file IJND, access to digital resources. If you look on page two of your, uh, of that packet, you will see the recommended change, uh, for that policy highlighted in yellow, and that was simply to add a fee schedule. You'll see the fee schedule for broken, uh, Chromebooks are, is not significant in, in the, in the number of, um, in the dollar number, the dollar amount. Um, but, we felt strongly that, uh, there needed to be a little bit of skin in the game, uh, when we have repeated screens being broken, keys being pulled off, um, chargers being lost, uh, or broken. Um, and frankly, in some cases, we have students who are on their second or third Chromebook because they're just getting smashed and not being taken care of. And so the idea was to create a small fee schedule, uh, for intentional and reckless damage that would be determined by the administrator who's, you know, tracking the, um, the issues with our Chromebooks. If you were to go into our technology office, um, I think you would see it looks like a, um, workshop in there, um, a Chromebook factory. There are, literally there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pieces that our tech team is constantly repairing. We do have a technician who, uh, wasn't designed to be his main job, but he literally visits the three schools every day, picks up all the broken Chromebooks, brings them back to the workshop, almost like Santa here, I'm kind of describing this. Fixes them and he goes back out to the schools and replaces them and gives them back out. Uh, so we, we need to try to curb some of that and, um, we're hoping that this might help. So that is IJND.
So that, was there a reason to say intentional or reckless damage versus just saying fee schedule for damage?
Look, sometimes it's accidental, a kid will drop it or, and so we're certainly, I think the idea was that we weren't looking to penalize a student that accidentally dropped his Chromebook or something or, um, those we've been dealing with, but it's when the same student is repeated, those kinds of issues.
Do we need to put this in any of the handbooks?
I think we, we did speak with Jill Follows, if she's here on.
I think she, yeah, she left.
But, you know, that was a discussion, I think, if I recall from the, uh, from the meeting the other day. That this should be part of the handbook. And to that point though, to Jane's point, it's not a, this isn't a full replacement, we're not looking to.
No, yeah, understood.
But it is to deter.
I just hate to put somebody in a position to say, you dropped it intentionally, you dropped it by accident. You know, I hate to, to make an administrator that, that person versus like, it's damaged, there's a, there's a fee for that.
So there's a, there is a tracking process, these are, you know, assigned to certain students. So if it's a, you know, a student that is continually having them, you know, putting the, you know, doing all the TikTok tricks to make it blow up and all that kind of stuff, um, then that's when this would be implemented.
Would it make sense to add that wording then, to make this more clear?
Or just add something that says, as determined by?
Right, administrator.
Tech administrator or whatever.
Tracking process. I don't know how detailed.
Not sure about the tracking process though, because it might be a one-time thing where the kid throws it.
So that would be like the accidental and probably all of them through it, still not in?
No, but, yeah, I don't think you'd have to say tracking, but maybe you could just say fee schedule for intentional or reckless damage as determined by whoever that, is it a tech administrator?
Uh, usually it's the building administrators that do the.
Building administrator.
The investigating if there's a, there's an issue.
How about just fee schedule? And lose for intentional, the sentence above it says individuals shall reimburse the district for repair or replacement of district property lost, stolen, damaged or vandalized under their care. Fee schedule, and then lose the for intentional reckless damage.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Because it already does state above what the fees would be for.
And the administrator is determining it.
That's right.
Regardless of.
Yep.
All right. Are we doing this as a package or one at a time?
What is your pleasure?
Oh, one at a time, please.
I'll move to accept, um, policy IJND as submitted.
With the edit.
Oh, no, we didn't edit, right?
Yeah, I thought we removed intentional or reckless.
We're just gonna say fee schedule.
Oh, fee schedule? For damage?
Just fee schedule.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because the sentence above it says.
Says damage, okay. As amended.
Second, motion made by Jane, seconded by Matt, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Uh, next up, we have, uh, responsible digital use policy, that's file IJNDB. Uh, and there are actually, um, no changes to this, it just needs to be added. So this was, this was an MASCE recommendation and we did, the subcommittee did not make any changes to the MASCE recommendation. So the idea would be to request the adoption of IJNDB.
Motion to approve IJNDB.
So moved.
Motion made by Matt.
Second.
Second by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Uh, the third policy underneath internet publication, IJNDC. Uh, this one was a little bit lengthier. You, the whole thing was a rewrite essentially, because it was so outdated. And you'll notice, we also struck, um, two paragraphs right in the middle of the, uh, beginning of the policy, um, on page four, want to eliminate that, uh, there's some redundancy there. Um, but there was a lot of language that was just really dated, webmaster and different things. And so, uh, you'll see that the, the actual entire policy has been rewritten.
Does this match MASCE now or does it still outdated?
No, this was our, um, Dan Saltzman, our, um, lead technician and his team actually rewrote this. And Dan, for this particular policy, actually, uh, worked with his colleagues across other school districts. Um, and that they were collectively bringing these forward to adopt, because this is how essentially it works. Like this is what, this is what we're doing as far as the expectations around content, around safety precautions, student work, student photographs, a lot of this stuff we're doing already. So the idea was to kind of craft the language that shows what we're doing, essentially.
Take a motion to approve.
Uh, I have a question.
Sure.
So when a, when a staff member travels to Washington DC, let's just use that as an example, or New York City or something, do they have a district phone that goes with them?
Uh, the lead nurse has a district phone, so if she's with them, but in this situation, she wasn't able to go. So we did not send the district phone.
So, so I'm in Washington DC and I'm a eighth grader who gets left at a museum. Didn't happen here, but has happened. Did not happen here, very clear about that, but has happened. I have no personal phone number to call anybody to let them know that I'm, you forgot me on the bus. I mean, because this says cannot share, will not give out.
Yep, so you'll see in other policies that are following this, we talk about using all of the district approved venues. So Google Classroom, email, we have a sports app that we use, I think it, I think, um, music, it's a, I think they use Google Classroom for their music page or site or something.
I just worry about will not give out versus should not give out.
Yeah. We just did discuss this in length, as Jason just said, spirited conversations on our polit, sub, our policy subcommittee. It's just almost impossible to avoid it. And I think putting it in with such strong language and strapping the hands of our educators that are doing good things. I don't know what the right thing is, but I know this doesn't feel like the best way to say it. There are, there are reasons, and Jane, you just gave us another one, that there are other instances where they just have to have communication. And we don't give out phones to our educators who are doing so much with our kids on a daily basis. You know, I love your example, Jane, about what, a field trip once a year and, okay, what are we gonna do? Put a phone that's, becomes a school phone? But I'm, I'll, you just said it and it brought me right back to when my kids went to DC. It was Mr. Cameron and his phone number was on the top of that packet that got handed out to the parents and the kids. Everyone had that phone number. What, was it his real phone number? Probably not. But it was probably a Google phone number that went to his personal phone. And it was communication and it was, it was felt safe and it felt good. That's one. I'm, the marching band, the kids are together every Saturday, there, there are many chaperones. But the person that's ultimately in charge of that group of 85 kids, the kid, they, there has to be a way they can communicate that isn't going on their Google Classroom and, if it's an emergency or.
I don't disagree, but it can't be the, it should not be the person's personal...
Point of order, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, because this policy, I think, this is, conversation's going to be...
We've had it, right.
No, no, no.
But I think that...
But I think you're on the wrong policy.
Yes.
Well, IJNDD will, excuse me, is it, it's going to come back up and we can have this conversation, I'm sure, Mr. Chair, but the safety precautions clause that you have in here is in relation to internet publications. So it's in relation to putting out student or information such as first names, personal cell phones, so that's in saying like, we're not putting that out on the internet.
On our internet.
As an internet publication, so not, I, it's, that's the conversation we want to have, I just don't think it's for this one.
It isn't.
It's not, yeah. Right, so the, the cell phone is IJNDD as opposed to IJNDC, right?
Aren't we on DD?
No, we're on DC.
We are on DC.
Oh, well, maybe that's my problem.
We're on DC.
A lot of, a lot of letters...
We haven't lost anyone in DC either, to your point.
They all came back last night.
I'll wait till DD then, I was on DD.
Okay.
You're on the right track.
I thought we already voted on that.
I want to take a motion for IJNDC.
So moved.
Motion by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Carol Locken. Any further discussion?
Just for clarification, this was for internet publication of information and all that kind of stuff, and it was really just to clean up a lot of the outdated languages Dr. Falco did, did put, so just so we're clear on it.
And we already basically do all of this, there's really nothing new, we get permission to post photos.
That's right.
Other releases are...
Get releases, yeah.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Now we'll move on to IJNDD.
Mr. Superintendent. Yes. So this was an update on our social media policy, and this too generated a lot of really rich conversation, because there's lots of social media pages and sites, and staff members are, you know, have things for their, for their activities, which is great, you know, whether it's athletics, or, or music, or clubs, et cetera. Students have, like, Class of 2025 and those kinds of pages and things. So the idea was to try to kind of streamline this and put together something that would make sense, but again, not tie the hands of those that are doing good work with our students. So you'll see the new language in yellow again. So I am going to read this piece. When an employee wants to establish a social media page for any class, club, or activity, proper permission and approval must be granted through a district-determined process, the appropriate administrator must be invited to join the social media page. We landed, I think, in a really good place with this, which was if it's the formal BMR, pick a sport, pick a club, pick an activity, you know, page, then we would have that page registered, you know, on a Google form somewhere that says, hey, you know, here's the Twitter handle, or the X handle, or here's the Facebook, you know, screen name, I'm not sure what that's called, but here are the other social media pages, this is where you can find it, so that we at least would know what's out there. It is not to prohibit our adults that are leading these things from having this information out there, but just to make sure that we have a handle on what's going on. So that's where, kind of the origins of that. We struck D and we struck E, section 2D and 2E, and then rewrote what will now be the new section D. Staff will not give out their private cellphone numbers to students, sounds like we're going to talk about that again. Instead, all electronic communication will go through district-approved methods. Maybe I'll just pause there.
Is this where you want to revisit your...
This is where I was speaking to before. I just, I, I believe that there are, so from personal experience, I have no access to a Google phone number. The systems that I have don't allow me to have a, without creating a whole new Google email and having another email that would be my fourth Google email. So I don't have that ability. So if I want somebody to contact me, it's either my personal cell or call my office, like, during the day when I'm at work in the office. I have had instances where I share that, my phone number with my students, rare circumstances, but I have. To think that I would not, like I would be violating a policy to do that, creates fear inside of me. Like, I think that there are instances where we ask our staff to be responsible for youth, and the major communication with those youths, youth is cell phone. I feel like I'm going to start Uncle Vinny, the two are youths, the two are youths, but with the, is, is cell phone. And so to think that I can't share my cellphone because it violates the policy, I just, I think, I, I like what it said before, you know, approval that you're going to do that may be an option, or under extenuating circumstances, you know, but I, I like should not give out versus will not give out.
To Jane's point, that we just sent two of our staff members to Spain and France with a group of kids, and every student and parent involved with that trip had the cellphone numbers of the staff that went, and that was our, that was our safety net.
What's the, so, what's the alternative?
But why is it an issue if it's the staff member giving it out? Where, what is the fear?
It's just a liability piece the district's opening itself up to. I mean, it is, that's, that is a fact of the matter, that you're opening it up because it's a personal phone, you are opening up...
So the other, the other option is to have, to have phones.
That's what I'm wondering.
To have phones.
So is the, sorry.
To address that.
Somebody who travels, you know, that we have, you know, work phones, I mean, people have work phones.
Because the need makes sense.
Are our BMR accounts able to have access to the Google phone? I mean, we run on...
All of our class lines can be forwarded to, to cell phones, like all of our school lines can all be forwarded. I mean, that's just something else to think about.
Which a weird piece to that is, like, my personal cellphone, I can't call the high school. I get a Verizon Wireless, your number can't go through. I can call the middle school, but I can't call the high school. So...
That's strange.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but...
But is there an alternative?
Carrie is the only unknown number that I answer.
I just wonder if there's an alternative, so, you know...
Well, is it as simple as what Jane just said, is should not, not will not, will not is...
So does that leave, but then does that leave too much? So then where do we put the, where do we put the kind of guidelines around what the should and should not is?
That puts the liability on them to do the right thing, and if they do the wrong thing, we have the policy.
Well, and what you crossed out is without prior approval of the district.
We have legal advice on that?
This is the MASCE language, is that teachers will not give out their private cell phones.
Really?
That's MASCE. We struck that. Yes, that was MASCE. That was...
Wait, but the, does the MASCE have without, without...
Without permission.
Yeah.
Yes, that is MASCE.
So I'm okay with without permission. Like, somebody has to know that you're giving it and the reason you're giving it, but...
Who's giving the permission?
District administrators.
Tell you who isn't giving them permission. It says prior approval of the district. Leave that in.
Right, yeah, the wording on E that struck out goes back to, I think, what we were suggesting it be is getting approval.
Yeah.
And this isn't so, like, this is what, this isn't, so teachers aren't being bothered at night. This is why, why? What is the why?
Liability, is what he said, right?
Yeah, it's just a liability issue, it opens up a whole...
It's one of those situations where it's not an issue until it's an issue.
And then you're going to wish it happened.
And then, and then you're going to wish you had, then you're going to wish you had something around this that, that safeguarded the district.
I mean, because F kind of covers if some, like, F is saying inappropriate contact via phone or electronic device is prohibited, but basically in E we're saying you can't do it.
Driving 50 miles an hour in a 35 mile an hour zone is prohibited too.
How did you know?
Are you saying you do it, Matt?
I'm not saying that.
I feel like he's watching me.
So my point is, is that...
Right.
Things, and, and that's true of all of these policies anyway, but, you know, when we have a, I didn't see you driving.
I know, there was no one around 2:00 AM.
Mass Pike, yeah, he was on the Mass Pike doing 85 in the third lane.
No, it was Millville.
How do we, how do we just, we can't foresee the future, we don't know, we, we know in our hearts that nothing's going to happen, that we trust our teachers, we trust our, our staff members. But there's stories day in and day out, all across the country, of staff members and teachers that were, and many different people across the country that were trusted at one point and that are not trusted anymore for the worst of worst reasons. As a staff member, as a, you know, I would think that I would want some sort of safeguard that says, hey, listen, maybe we do put in a provision that says, unless traveling abroad, specific situation, we have, I mean, how, how wordy do we want to get with this that says, you know, do we have permission from both parent and admin, you know, so that it's understood, that everybody says, yes, this is okay. You know, I've fought pretty hard to have language like this so far. I really don't feel like I can give up any, I personally can't, don't think we should give up anymore for the sake of ease, or for the sake of, you know, maybe it won't happen. And again, not to say that, you know, this is happening in this district at all. God forbid.
Yeah, I, I have no issue with will not give out as long as we as a district are providing an, an alternative that makes sense, and, and the alternative, I don't know what APP, I don't even know what that is.
An app.
I think it's general for any...
Yeah, any app, but, like, those are not, if I'm, if I am traveling, if I am out on the road, whatever that is, whether it's in Spain, which I'd love to be chaperoning that in the future, or DC, or McDonald's for a kindergarten celebration, like, I, we need to be able to get, not we personally, and not even all the parents of all the kids going, but there needs to be a, like, a contact number, and if, especially if there's not a nurse that's, that's going. So whether that means we start investing in district phones, that somebody going on a trip takes the phone, and it's a, you know, common number, whatever, I'm okay with that, I just think it needs to be something more than just no, absolutely no, under no circumstances, can you contact somebody by phone?
So we spoke about apps, using apps, and this kind of goes to, to, I think it might be in something else here, or it was, and we took it out, but having one app to kind of rule it all in the district.
WhatsApp.
Yeah, something less encrypted, I guess, than that, but more where the, you know, where it can be the public, you know, it can be, the information can be pulled from it. So I don't know if that's an alternative to, to this, where it would be tracked. Everybody uses apps to communicate now, so, you know, is it a WhatsApp? I don't, I don't know, I don't use any of that stuff, I...
So should we put a hold on this until we can explore those other alternatives?
Or language, yeah, discuss the language more.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the things in the, in the policy subcommittee that we did talk about, was at least bring it, we wanted to bring it to the larger committee and have this discussion and understand the opinions and the thoughts, so we can, because we're almost at a, at a dead end, not a dead end, but almost a standstill of, of, you know, where do we go, how do, how do we do this? So that was why we brought this up here. So maybe not so much for our vote, but definitely for, for more conversation.
Again, I think this conversation is bringing it further than the actual policy intention of social media. This brings it to another, like, E, D, whatever it's going to be, actually as a whole number.
Right, level, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so it was good discussion, so we'll pass over making a decision on IJNDG for the date, and now we will move on to GBED.
All right, so this is the personnel use of technology, some similar themes from the prior one. That was one of the reasons, too, that we put all of these together, is they were very much overlapping. The policies were kind of bleeding into each other, so we were trying to clean a lot of these up at the same time. This too added a lot of spirited chatter to our meeting. This was a new draft, this is a new MASCE policy, and you can see the changes that we recommended. And again, we were trying to get this to align with the policy we just looked at, so that there wasn't conflicting language between the two. So here we added, "Digital resources are provided to support the work of the district", email, Google Classroom, a district-approved app, and I know in athletics, they use SportsU. And then if you go down toward the bottom, we struck team, class, or student organizations' pages, accounts, groups will be created only in conjunction with a coach or faculty advisor. We talked about that in the last policy, right? Like, we get, kids are going to do a page for their Class of 2025 thing. All groups must include the appropriate administrator. Again, we struck that because we, we kind of cleaned that up in the policy before this. And then the last part, "All contacted messages by coaches, faculty, the team members shall be sent to all team members except for messages concerning medical academic privacy matters, in which case the messages will be copied to the appropriate administrator." We, we struck that out as well. And then we got rid of online and added digitally. So when interacting with students digitally, group interactions are encouraged. So there was a lot of conversation around this too. Again, not wanting to tie the hands of the staff, but wanting to ensure that we're insulating the district from any potential liability shouldn't be an issue.
So the first one that struck, it's repetitive from the policy that we're tabling tonight. The second one is, like Jason said, so I was definitely the one that said it tied their hands too much, to make everything group, in a group activity, because what happens when a student goes into a teacher's classroom after school for extra help and is one-on-one? Like, if you're making them feel like they can't have an online conversation with just the two of them, how are they going to be in, in a school setting? And even though Matt said it in a different context, but we're entrusting them with the youth.
And you're going to say youths.
And that is, you know, when you start making people feel uncomfortable about it, how do they do their jobs? So I felt the next line, "When interacting with students digitally, group interactions are encouraged." So, but other examples came up, that if a coach needs to communicate just to the captain, and then the captain's responsibility is to communicate to the team, you know, then there has to be a way for that to happen. You could probably pick any instance with, you know, a class advisor talking to the class president, it's not going to be, there are some times when those conversations have to be able to happen. And then we're only talking about online again, so, or digitally, how are they going to feel in a classroom if they're not allowed to have anything but a group discussion in an email, or in a text, or in a... So that's why, that's how we got to that in the policy subcommittee. We felt that it was least restrictive but most protective.
And to your point, coaches still have a, and faculty and staff still have a way of communicating one-on-one with a student that is still backed up by district, you know, policy with Google Classroom, or as I mentioned before, an app that we were able to pull the data from. So I'm okay with that, given those two examples, if we have, have that ability, that we have, we have some sort of failsafe, we have some sort of safety net that if we need to pull that data, that it's not encrypted on a, on an app somewhere that we can't get to. on an app somewhere that we can't get to. Very light reading.
So I'll make a motion to approve GBEE as written.
Motion made by Erin.
Second.
Second by Jane.
She beat you out of the gate. She was honest, she was ready.
Any further discussion? All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next, the report of the superintendent.
Uh, there's one other thing out of that, sorry.
I know, I know. I know, I was just trying to pass by it. One vital policy discussion anyway would be cell phone pilot next steps.
Just to loop back to a quick, um, piece, I know we've had one discussion about it already, um, at the onset of the pilot. To just jog everybody's memory, the high school had piloted, uh, over, you know, the last few weeks. The cell phone, um, kind of lock boxes in the classrooms, there were five classrooms where they did that. There were over 300 and, uh, over 350 students that were participating in this, whether it was, you know, one student that had two classes that had these boxes, or it was just one student that was in one class, but overall, there was over 350 students that participated. Uh, and just to jog everybody's, again, just kind of memory, student goes in, they put the phone in the lockbox at the start of class, teacher locks it up, has class, at the end of class, teacher unlocks it, and students come back and take their phone out. So we were at our last policy meeting, we're checking in with the high school administration to see how the pilot was going. Uh, overall, and everybody please jump in on this, but that's on the policy subcommittee, but overall, the administration felt strongly that the pilot worked well. That they had a little bit of complaining in the beginning, uh, by a few students, by a few parents, but, uh, everybody engaged in the pilot. And that it did in fact help minimize the distractions during class time. Students still had their phones. We also, uh, in, in between classes, uh, we also discussed, you know, fire drills and those situations where the teacher just picked up the box and brought it outside with them. That kind of thing. So certainly would, you know, I don't know if anyone else, this was another piece, the very strong opinions.
Any feedback from the three or four young people who came to address us about this, who were concerned about it?
Nothing formal.
I mean, what I got from Mr. Ducharme when he was with us on that meeting was the hope for consistency and, you know, students knowing what is expected in every class, because even, I guess before we even had this, there was a few teachers that had the shoe bag on the wall and some kids put it in, some kids didn't. He actually asked that if it is something we're going to do, that he wants another box for the office, because when they are taken, they're right now on a desk, so is that, you know, now we are liable because that phone is on the desk and if it goes missing or if it's damaged or whatnot. You know, he, he seemed to think that that, the consistency piece was going to be. And, and he said that students were okay, like, you know, and they, he, he said he's been in and out of the classes and that they're engaging and they're actually doing the things that you want them to do at school, which is talk to each other and, and do the schoolwork and.
I just have a question. Do we have a cost per box and how many boxes and a total if this were to go through, what the cost will be to the district?
The boxes were about $50 apiece.
So, and we need, how many?
We got five of them, so we would need, you know, whatever the number is, times $50.
I, I would like to know how many, we would need to, what the total cost would be to the district.
Was this a grant that we started with? I, I don't.
No, this one, this is not a grant. No, we just were doing a pilot to see how it, so we use a high school.
The high school or the high school and middle school or all grades or?
It was all.
I mean, moving forward, what would we want to do?
So the conversation, it was the high school, eight through 12.
To, to kind of touch on Jane's question of feedback from the ladies that came and spoke to us. I know one piece that they have mentioned is that some of the pilot teachers were the staff members who don't have an issue with cell phone use in their classroom, that it's already the expectation, you walk in, your phone does not come out. So that may or may not skew the results because there wasn't a cell phone issue to begin with in those classes. Other feedback from them has been very consistent that when looking at policy and when wanting to put in policy that affects their day-to-day life, the students would really like to be part of the policymaking. They would like to have a seat at the table. And that would probably be our easiest way to get policies put in place when the kids speak to it and they can own it and they can speak to their peers about that. As far as the budget piece that Tara just brought up, I keep going back to the grant that we had that we used for the yonder pouches that we could have used on a lot of other things and we got three months out of yonder pouches. So I, I keep playing with the overall cost and wondering almost why we're not doing this as a rollout, why we're not, we, I, and I totally admit, I've only been part of one policy subcommittee, so this could have been a discussion earlier, but why wouldn't we try maybe just the incoming eighth graders? And that's as a parent of an incoming eighth grader, so maybe that's the way we set the standard and we lower our budget cost to see if it worked with the eighth grade, then we roll it up and do eighth and ninth grade or we just kind of play with it that way instead of taking on the entire cost the way we did with the yonder pouches.
Yeah, I like that, except, except when you have the mixed grade and then what do you do here? You're putting your phone in this box.
I disagree with, with, uh, the whole premise. I think the kids should be, learn how to be responsible. They, it should be expected to just turn it to silence when class starts, so you're not interrupting the teacher. And then, you know, the phone can be used as an incentive. You do your work, you get it done, you can use your phone.
So what's happening with the state bill?
I haven't heard any updates on that recently, actually.
Because while I'm a proponent of students being responsible as a college administrator and a classroom professor, I have 40-year-olds who take out their phone and watch a movie while the lecture's going on or the class discussion is going on or, you know, I, never mind 17-year-olds or 12-year-olds or whatever, I just, it's, I, I, I am a proponent of, of no cellphone in the class. You heard me the last time when the students came, like I just, I think it hampers the educational process. If there's a need for it, if there is a, uh, game they're playing that requires that, then you just hand them back out of the box and you use your cell phone for this activity or, or whatever the case may be. I think there's, there's solutions in that, but it is, it is asking a lot of a person to not, and you all heard my phone go off while we were in the meeting. I mean, I have my alarm set for 6:30 and I'm sure it disturbed some people, but it's, you know, it's, it's, it's something I'm willing to pay the consequence for because my phone went off. If somebody wants to see what's on my phone, that's, that's them, but my dog needs his epilepsy medicine, so, um, I, it's, it's distracting, it's disturbing and it's, it, it is too much of a. I don't even know the right word that I want to say, but to say that, you know, let's let the students be responsible, why are we giving them?
Send them to the vice principal.
But he's already dealing with that. That is, how did we get here?
Can I ask a question about the piloting?
Fire away.
I, I don't know if you even have this information, but did any of the teachers that were piloting say any students said they don't have one or turned in maybe a fake phone? Did they say, like, anybody refused to turn anything in?
And it was kind of like, uh, that was already happening, wasn't it? Right, I asked that in the.
Yeah, I heard about that at another district that tried to do something similar. There was like students that were bringing in old cell phones. Yeah.
Something broken one in or something.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I mean, if we're, if we're looking.
I just want to know if they got any pushback during the pilot.
Mr. Chair. Yeah. Thank you. If we're looking to find reasons why not to do it, we can find a million reasons why not to do this. We can sit on our hands and we can just not do it. And I don't disagree with the young ladies that were here that night who feel as though, you know, there's a, a sense of punishment without the crime. That's a, that is a legitimate and feeling and I get that. And I don't disagree with Chuck here that says, why aren't we teaching them responsibility? But the two things that kind of go in there is that we're, we're educating them, you know, we have a lesson, the teachers have a lesson plan and they shouldn't be taking their time out to teach them about, maybe we have a class for phone etiquette, I don't know, I don't know, but, you know, it's, are we going to take their time, 15 seconds per student, maybe five students, it eats into class time. And, and, and I'm not trying to speak for the educators, but I'm sure, you know, some of them would agree. And unfortunately, there's a situation where it has to be, this is where equity does come in. You know, equity is not always good, but this is where equity is, where we, we have to treat everybody the same. You know, and it, it is an equal outcome, unfortunately. If it wasn't a problem, we wouldn't be having this, this conversation, but teachers and admin have come to us and, you know, expressed their, their wishes for this, so, um, maybe it's an opportunity that we, we do learn, we do teach them and we do get better from it, but my only question to that is just to, not to take too much time, but we always asked if there was more, less, if there was money left in the yonder, grant that.
I think that's gone, right.
That's all, that is gone. Okay. I can't remember if we had that answer, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Matt, can I just ask, is that how this policy came to be, that the administrators approached the policy subcommittee, asking?
And they actually, they wrote a draft of one. It came from, uh, the high school administration and the school resource officer, because it was such a problematic issue.
And, and it was born also out of, you know, recent events that we had in the school where cell phones were.
The cell phones can be locked up from seven to three and if something's going to be, like that's.
Absolutely can, but it can also mitigate it during, during the day.
But not if they have it during passing time and lunches, like if something's going to be posted during the day, it's going to be posted.
My point.
Or they, that's the student who hands in the fake phone into the lockbox and they're posting from the bathroom.
And again, we can't, and how, we can't stop everything. I mean, we can't stop, you know, again, we can't stop Erin from going 55.
But we can be consistent in our message and our, our message needs to be, if you're in a classroom, you're in a classroom. You're not on a phone, you're not watching a movie, you're not, you don't have an earbud in your ear. You know, you, you are in an academic setting and part of that is being a participant in the classroom as an engaged person attempting to learn and participate and cell phones don't belong in that environment.
The, the AirPod, the music thing was mentioned though, and there is a way they can do it from their Chromebook. Because some kids need that during study hall or during, and, um, Mr. Ducharme said that they have all, access to all of that on their Chromebooks. So they need that during certain times, whether it's permission from the class or study. That they would be able to, some kids, you know, they have their own methods, but.
Does MASC already have a, a policy on this that we could work off of or is there a draft?
Not to my, not to my knowledge. We looked, we looked at quite a few different places and we couldn't find any.
Are we proposing something or?
Actually, let me strike that. We did find, we did find, let me, let me correct myself. We did find, we didn't find anything we liked. There were, there was no restriction or it was all restriction. It was 100% in, no phones, period, the end, lock boxes, yonder pouches, or it was be responsible.
Um, we, we decided as a policy subcommittee that we just needed to have more conversation together. That's why there's nothing written here, right?
Exactly, yeah.
It was kind of be like.
Yeah, exactly.
Just to talk about it.
Would it be helpful, I know we, with the policy subcommittee, Keith and Jill were able to join us. So we're kind of able to talk about the fact that at the beginning of the year, the expectation was 45 minutes at a time off and away, and that didn't work. So, you know, so you hear that, there was a lot of teacher feedback. It wasn't just the administration and the SRO, a lot of teachers very concerned about the cell phone usage, so, and it was taking away, you know, from distracting.
It is. It, it does at home too, and I think any of us, if we don't admit that here, then beyond the problem in the school, I see it as a parent that my kids lose their, lose time. I, I, I think we all do. You know, they'll come home from work and 10 minutes later, they're not in the house and I'm like, what are you doing? And, you know, I'll, I'm not going to call out any of my kids, but they're not on their phone at work, so then they.
Catch up.
Catch up, but it's like, do you realize how much time that just took out of your day, you know? Or you have, you have kids, we have kids in college that if, maybe if they were taught differently in high school to, for that time management away from the device, they wouldn't have to. They wouldn't be as distracted by it when they're prepping for something in college. It's an unfortunate side effect of all of us having them in our hands. And I, I mean, if anything, for any other reason, I appreciate that it came from the SRO and maybe that was a safety direction, but if anything, maybe we'll just be teaching them better life skills on managing their time and paying attention to what's in front of them at the moment and moving, you know, to that next class or lunch or, I, I don't know.
I would just like to request, when, you know, subcommittee goes to the next phase of this discussion, include like liability to the district for these phones if there are damages or someone takes the wrong one. There's all, I think there's other scenarios to consider when you write up this policy.
We have touched on it, but.
Yeah.
Could we also get a total cost? I know they're saying $50 each, but about how many?
Definitely.
Because we didn't budget for this next, for next year.
And I think it makes sense to do it district-wide. I wouldn't pick it just for the high schools. I, 100% agree. If you're going to do it. If I can have a phone in the sixth grade and now I can't have it in the eighth grade, like hello.
They can't. It's a middle school, it's, they're not supposed to have a phone with them, on them. They're not supposed to.
And it is followed a little.
They are not supposed to have a phone?
Right. It's supposed to be shut off.
But they have a locker.
Why don't we have?
They do have lockers in middle school. We don't have them in the high school, so.
Yeah, I get, like Tara just said, maybe we find, is that in the handbook for middle school?
Yeah, why aren't we mimicking that at the high school?
We, we did, we told them the kids just aren't doing it.
They don't, yeah, I have, I have not heard.
They have the same rule, it's a lot of the way.
There's a, there's a certain maturity difference in a, in a, you know. There's a difference. There's a difference between younger kids and older kids. Am I, am I wrong? There's a difference.
They said yes.
They all agreed. Whatever I said.
All right, I like that. I like that. All right, at the request of the vice chairman, we're going to move on. We look forward to hearing back from the subcommittee. It was a very robust discussion, very, very well. Uh, moving on now to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. We, in your, in your packets, speaking of handbooks and policies and all these things, our student handbooks for this upcoming school year, pending any changes to any policies that may be upcoming, those may need to be amended to reflect, but we only have Millville Elementary that has recommended changes for this year. Uh, the high school does not have any recommended changes, again, unless there's a policy change. And similarly with the middle school, unless there's a policy change.
Is that a promise?
Very light.
Very, very light.
Yes. So, um, one of the things, um, we were just calling it the parent-student handbook since there's so little at that age, it really, is really the parents that are taking responsibility, so. So that's one of the edits. And then a big chunk is just changing the calendar, all the typical stuff, the members of the, um, school community, the staffing, adjusting the times for preschool times in there, so that they're correct times. Then the, um, other big piece was the guidance, just rewording some of their curriculum, so making it, um, where it's not choose love in there, but we're talking about all the framework and all that they're using.
We also wanted to add some language for the bus. We looked at a few other districts around to see if we were missing something or found that we needed to just tighten it up a little bit, so we grabbed some language from other, um, places and we're hoping to add that to our bus language.
Obviously, it would seem common sense that kindergarteners sit in the front of the bus, but that's not always the case. Sometimes they wander, so we like to. So we like to... Many of the buses keep them in the front, but sometimes they like to wander, so it's more important. I mean, they're pre-K to three, but, you know, they're still learning how to ride a bus in kindergarten without a seatbelt. So that's an important piece.
And I don't think they realize that they get bus misconduct slips if they don't behave on the bus. So we felt that that was important to put in there.
And then the employment, since our kids don't work, we took that line out. And then we also don't want our kids walking home at our level, so... And the other stuff is just updating, like, people in charge of the different policies or the titles or any of that stuff.
Dates.
Dates, yep. And then obviously anything here. That's it. I told you, less than five minutes. Any questions?
So that's Millville, MES. And so are we voting on all these, all the handbooks?
There aren't any changes. Look, that's what's in your...
Well, that's right. We don't have to make...
Just to be clear, you're just changing the time, the in-and-out time to reflect the correct... That we've been using all this year. Nothing's changed.
No, no, no. Yes, thank you.
For the minutes and for everybody listening, that we're not changing the times of the MES school day.
If... Assuming that this is in Millville next year, other than pre-K, are there any people who live on that street who would... I mean...
I don't think they can walk because of the regional transportation, correct?
I'm just, like, I'm thinking when we were in Blackstone, there might have been somebody literally across the street, and it seemed...
Oh, we have someone right now that lives right across the street, and he gets a bus.
And they can walk, waiting for her bus.
No. She waits for the bus. I've seen the... I pass her when she's getting on the bus.
So the high school is different, but...
No, our kids...
We'd wave some of them.
Yeah.
High schools...
Okay. So we still can.
But at that age, love it.
We still can.
Our kids are in the... Pre-K, too. I mean, when it was at MES, there were families that walked every day.
That walked down the road, yeah.
But they would be parent pickup. These kids are dismissed and let walk.
Right.
Correct. No. And then we do have that. We do have parents that live, like, diagonal in the corner. And they come, they walk, they pick up their child, they wait at the door, and then they walk home.
Yeah.
So they don't wait in the parent pickup. So that's us as parent pickup. I'm not letting them walk home by themselves.
Understood. I just, I didn't want to take out something that makes it seem like they can't do it at all. But it just, it doesn't really say that, so it's fine.
Ready?
Yes, Tara.
I'll make a motion to approve the MES parent-student handbook edits for '25-'26 school year.
Seconded by Tara Scobie. Seconded by who? Chuck. Seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Should we make a motion to accept no changes to...
As well, while you're throwing it out there.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to accept the middle school and high school handbooks with no changes, except for school committee and school calendar.
Second.
That's how it's...
Motion made by Erin, seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now we vote. Now we have an internal assessment system. Aye ready?
Yes. So I'll turn it over to Mary and Jill in just a quick moment. But just as a reminder, we've been looking at our internal assessment system for the past couple of years. We've done some piloting and some different trials this year. And Mary and Jill are here with some of the recommendations around our next steps.
Hello. So just to recap what we've been talking about for this year, that we piloted just using the assessments from our curriculum for math, and we kept STAR. And so that was to see how effective it would be. But we found that the needs that were identified is that we needed... We needed better benchmark tools for ELA and for math. So the last time I was here, we talked about the two curriculums that we... I mean, the two assessments that we were looking at, and we chose I-Ready. And we met first, we met with the assessment committee. The assessment committee unanimously chose I-Ready for both math and for ELA. And Jill is gonna go with, gonna explain some of the reasons why we went with I-Ready.
So one of the reasons we chose I-Ready was there was a high correlation to MCAS, meaning that it gave... How students performed on I-Ready tests was correlated very closely to how they would perform on MCAS. So it really gave us a window, or will give us a window into how students will perform on that benchmark. They also have a wonderful range of depth-of-knowledge questions. So they'll ask questions that require just kind of, what do you know about this? But then the questions move into higher-order thinking. So using the skills to answer questions, analyzing, critically thinking, rationalizing their perspective or their answer. So it's a really nice, rich set of questions that gives us a good view into what skills, what kids can do. The extensive reporting capability, so this gives us an opportunity. They have multiple reports that we can pull. So we can look at how students are doing at the teacher level, at the grade level, at the school level, and beyond. So it really has some rich reports that we can pull to see what students need. Where are they, and in terms of skills, what do they need? And this data can also and will be used for MTSS, RTI, as well as differentiating within the classroom. It also has the ability to group students based on skills. And it's not just skills, or not just students that might be struggling, but it could also group students based on who's on level and what students are advanced in terms of that grouping, so that we can, again, differentiate instruction for students. The math intervention resources are also very rich, because it's all embedded in there. They offer complete lessons that are based on student skills. And again, that breadth, so not just students that might be struggling, but also students that are at grade level and students that are above grade level or advanced. So it's providing a rich resource for not just RTI instructors, but classroom teachers as well.
Jill, I wanted to mention that, you mentioned that when we were doing our blueprint, community information. Actually, some families asked, you know what I mean? What can be a place for personal pathways for students and not just intervention? So this could be definitely a way to help support that and identify and support that.
Exactly.
I was at a meeting today with the fourth-grade teachers, and I talked a little bit about that, and they were very excited to hear that piece, the intervention piece, that they could use it as well. And also, this was the... These were the main reasons why we went with I-Ready, because the amount of data that we'll get that we can actually use was, it was far better than the other assessments that we were looking at. Once we met with the assessment committee and they voted for I-Ready, then Jason, Jill, Jill and I, and the principals, met with the people with I-Ready, and they actually also thought that this was a good way to go. And then for our next steps, we'll be implementing this in August. The thing that comes with I-Ready that I really liked also was they have a lot of professional development. So we'll start it in August. And the first one will be about how to use the data to drive the instruction, how to administer the test as well. We'll do that one in August. And then during our November PD Day, we'll do our second instruction with them to understand that by then, they'll have all of their own data. All the teachers will have their own students' data. So how to use their own students' data to build on the strengths that the kids have and to scaffold for the kids that need extra help. And then for the third one, they'll have done two diagnostics by that time, so we can look at action steps at that point for the teachers and come up with a plan. They also have other professional development as well if we need them. So this was... And they're also seem to be a really, actually, a very supportive company. So they're very responsive, and they've been really nice to work with so far. Then we'll review this. The committee, the assessment committee, will also review this at the end of next year to make sure that we're on track. We've only purchased it for one year. And so to see how, you know, how it goes.
Tara, does this have a way to send a report home, like the way Jill mentioned? That they, that individual pathway?
Yeah.
Families at home will get information on that?
Yes, it has parent reports as well.
Is that included on the breakdown of class? That's all included? That's all.
Yeah. Yes, Jill asks that question frequently. Is this all included? And, yes, it is. Also, it actually will be, can be reported in Spanish as well.
And this is all grade levels we have this for?
Yes, till 10, K to 10.
You see this goes down all the way to per teacher? Is it like, as far as like results or, you know, data?
Per class.
Per class. Okay, so per class.
At the teacher level.
Right. Yeah.
Does MCAS do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it does. And that was one of the issues with STAR. They didn't correlate.
Any other discussion? Any further comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the new internal assessment system. Aye ready?
So moved.
Motion made by Tara, seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay. Summer and fall sports update.
Darlene, come on down.
Let's see if she was hiding around the corner.
Yeah, she's been hiding around the corner with Scott. Scott's sitting over there, too.
It's probably a warmer corner.
So we have completed spring sports. Our last athletic event was yesterday. Here are some of the highlights from the season. We celebrated our All-Star athletes at the DVC All-Star Ceremony. Those athletes were Natalia Marias, Camille Wetherell, Kamaya Bianco, Josie Scungio, Ryan James, Jackson Dutton, James Reben, Carly Chaconi, Carson Canoyer, Marin Berry, Carolyn Ternuzer, and Izzy Godet. We had several athletes qualify for states for both middle school and high school track. And for the first time, we hosted the middle school state track championship yesterday at our high school. This is because Iowa State Championship was at Bridgewater. That got postponed halfway through the meet. And my middle school head coach threw us in the ring for hosting it. I think it was a great opportunity. It seemed to go well. And we're exploring options to host relays and middle school states next year as well. So I think it's a great opportunity to get more visibility for our school.
Not to interrupt, Darlene, but when she says, like, we hosted the state meet, I don't think any of you quite grasp the size of what this meet was. Like, I know Chuck was... It was massive.
Threading traffic. I drove by. It was amazing.
There was not a place to put another car at the high school or at the complex. Like, it was huge. We had kids, like, from Amherst, like, all over the state were competing at BMR yesterday. It was...
The whole track was lined, which was really cool.
It was huge.
Thirty-five teams.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Tents set up along the side of the building.
Yeah.
It was a strange call I got from Chuck around five o'clock. He's like, "The place is mobbed. Can you get a drone down here?" I was on a roof, and I'm like, "All right, let me see what I get."
Did we get one? Did you get one?
Yeah.
We'll share it.
I have a sneak peek. Did you get that?
Yeah.
A picture of it, yeah.
You had a good video, Terry.
And that was at the very beginning. Like, that didn't even convey how big it got. It was... I'm glad I got there early. That's all I need to say.
Chuck was saying that to me as he was giving someone directions to, like, go to the Kennedy School Park there and walk back.
Yeah.
Great. I think the track boosters did a...
So we... And then our girls' tennis team advanced to round 32 of the playoffs and ended up losing to Bromfield. I'm gonna be scheduling end-of-season coach evaluations with all our spring coaches over the next, like, two weeks. And then we're gonna be reviewing their schedules at the same time, kind of reviewing what they liked, what they didn't like about the schedule, teams to avoid, and teams to definitely schedule for next year. And then parents and students should expect the end-of-season survey for any of the spring sports to come out by this weekend. It's really important people respond to these surveys. It is anonymous, and I use it to, you know, discuss with the coach their performance as well. So it's really important people respond. We are looking forward to summer, and we'll be offering the following programs: Open strength and conditioning. This is open to all sports, both men and women, grades eight through 12. This will be 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM in the high school weight room, Monday through Thursdays. We'll have field hockey captains' practices Mondays and Wednesdays. And then Fitness Fridays usually is in collaboration with the girls' field hockey team and the girls' soccer team. Once they get going and see what their attendance is like, they're gonna implement Fitness Fridays for grade six through 12. We'll have boys' soccer captains' practices on Mondays. Cheer captains' practices on Wednesdays. This will be inside the school. Pretty much everything else is outside. And for cheer specifically, I'll always be present, just because there is... Coaches can't be there because it violates MIA rules. So I will be there just to monitor safety and make sure they have everything they need and make sure the building is secure. We will be offering a Charger youth football camp through our head coach, Jamie Caparella. Registration is required for this. We have a bunch of posters in the middle school. But he has a website, too, with all the information that I can pass out the link to. We will have open track starting late July from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the high school track. And then I have, like, two open sessions just for more of our popular sports. So for open basketball, that will be every Thursday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, open to all grades, both genders or all genders. And then we'll have open soccer out probably on the lower fields at the high school every Tuesday from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And then separate from our youth football camp, we'll also have, pending approval, we'll also have a high school football camp. In the past, all the DVC teams had their own football camp. This way, it prevents, like, violating any MIA rules. Basically, all the coaches coach all the kids. We're just trying to host it here instead of going to Nittmuck or another school. Additional captains' practices may be added. We're still in the process of hiring coaches, too, so things may change, but I will make sure everyone's updated on any changes. And then if there's any rainouts for any of the captains' practices, if they're meant to be outside, they'll either get canceled or postponed. We won't be moving them inside for rain. And then over the summer, I plan on thoroughly cleaning all the storage areas, particularly at the high school. We have a ton of storage areas in the basement and in the locker rooms that's just, like, filled with old stuff. We could use that storage for a ton of other things. So that's a big project. I hope to recruit students to help me with that over the summer as well. I'm gonna be re-washing all the uniforms, organizing them. We have a new closet for all the new uniforms, so we know exactly what we have for the current season. And then Izzy Godet, my intern, is helping me go through all the old stuff to see what's sellable versus what just has to be trashed in terms of the old uniforms. And I think we were discussing with the athletics committee, selling the apparel that can be sold during homecoming week, maybe next fall.
Darlene, how are you washing the uniforms?
So originally, I was getting quote with stadium systems for laundry service. I just recently found out there's a wash-and-dryer at the high school, though, so I figured that's more cost-effective. So I'm just washing them myself over the summer. So I'm just washing them myself over the summer. For fall updates, we are hiring for the following positions. Varsity cross-country, middle school cheer, varsity field hockey. We are interviewing a candidate tomorrow for that. JV field hockey, and an athletic trainer. The following positions have already been filled, so we just hired a varsity cheer coach, Alyssa Bork. She is new. The cheerleading team was involved in the interview process, so we're all on board. We all came up with our goals for what we wanted in the new coach and in the team. And we're all really comfortable and excited for her to join us. We'll be continuing with Kevin McCourt for girls' varsity soccer. Matt Wheeler is our new boys' varsity soccer coach. He comes from Shrewsbury. He has a really great record with a Division One school, so he's going to be a great addition. John Christina, he's going to continue with middle school soccer for both boys and girls. I already met with him to discuss how the scheduling would work for practices and for games, and we're comfortable with how that lands. Jamie Caparella will continue for varsity football. And Marsha Harvey will continue for middle school cross-country. And then for fall dates, the important dates, football practices will start August fifteenth. Every other sport will start August eighteenth. Tryouts will begin the eighteenth, which is the first day. Coaches can have interaction with their kids and go until the twenty-second. And then all the user fees will be due the twenty-ninth, which is the second Friday after tryout starts. So that should be enough time where coaches can make selections and then families will know, hopefully a week in advance, if their child made the team and have time to plan for the user fee. And then I'm meeting right now with fall coaches just to review the fall schedule we have so far, add the remaining games. My goal is to have a complete fall schedule within the next two weeks. Add that all to Arbiter into our website and then create a bus schedule based off of that, like right out the gate, so we'll be set for upcoming fall season. And then, once we hire an athletic trainer, that will be another big piece over the summers to make sure they have everything they need, make sure they have a space, and review their schedule for game coverage and practices. That is everything. Any questions?
Yeah. When are you, so, so you're working with the coaches now for the fall? And then as soon as you finish those schedules, are you rolling right into winter schedules with those coaches?
It's actually kind of concurrent right now. Basketball, we only need three more games, I think, for boys' basketball. So we're close to basketball. You really need to get on early. But right after fall is done, then I'll work on the remaining winter sports.
That'll open you up to start spring soon.
Yes. And spring, because baseball was so competitive to get opponents, I'm trying to get verbal agreements at least like now before athletic directors go on break, just so we know who we can count on when we're actually scheduling it. It was very competitive. It was almost as competitive as getting football games, so. Be important.
And Arbiter Live? Will they all go into Arbiter Live?
Yes. They'll be, everything will be in Arbiter from, like where I enter, I log in in Arbiter. But it'll also be on the website. The website will have like a full like printable list, and then Arbiter says to sports you. I will preface by saying Arbiter Live, I really am not a fan of Arbiter Live. I can communicate like, "Hey, these are the games. I'm waiting for the contract to be accepted." But if both ADs don't accept the contract, it won't show on Arbiter Live. So I'm hoping the website can fill in the gaps if we're waiting for contracts to be accepted.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for that detailed update.
Thanks, Darlene.
Thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Is that the last superintendent's report?
Not forever, but for me.
Moving to the business office. Joe?
Thank you. For the budget journal entries, the first item on the list. There's quite a few budget journal entries you'll see in the next week, the next month there'll be even more, except for a few miscellaneous entries. For example, the first one is just correcting a salary stipend line. And the second one is the additional funds that were needed for the additional Saperon to Spain. Other than those types of miscellaneous entries, the majority of these entries relate around the additional purchasing in FY25 we did preparing for FY26. Many of them are to move budgeted updated account, to update the accounts at the end of year reporting. That'll be happening within the next month or two. And the year-end budget allocations, I've begun doing that. The next meeting, I'll have a final budget adjustment for year-end allocations, just to make sure everything lines up to our budget. Unless there's any questions, that's all I had for this piece.
Okay. Any questions for Joe? Take a motion to approve the budget journal entries?
No.
Motion made by Jane?
Seconded.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
The next piece is the personnel report, just showing you the resignations and appointments that take place, just to be put on file. Quite a few appointments, which is nice to see. And then my expenditure report is the next piece. And you'll see that I've, through the journal entries I've been doing, that most of the lines that were carrying deficit balances at one point have been reallocated, and you don't see as many in there. The line that you will see a deficit still on is under transportation, which is on page two, under professional services. That's only because I'm waiting for the final bills to come in for the fiscal year, and then I can make sure everything that's supposed to be in the grants, in the grant, and we can take a look at that line and hopefully eliminate that deficit also. And the other place you'll see deficits is under tuitions for school choice sending and charter school sending. I guess Desi looks at those as legal deficits because we really don't have the right number at the beginning of the year anyways, and it's adjusted as we go. We're still looking to end in the positive light, which that will support our, the E&amp;D that we're looking to aim for for the end of the year. And that's all I have for that unless you have any questions at this point. And the final piece was just kind of an informational piece. I am in the process of trying to apply for a school violence prevention program grant, the SVPP. It's through the COPS Community Oriented Policing Services Office. Found out about this grant about a week ago. It's due in about, well, the first piece is due within a few days, if I can make this happen. And then the grant itself is due, I believe I have it on there, the twenty-sixth, yes, the twenty-sixth. The issue, it's a $500,000 maximum grant. The grant, if, if we are awarded, it's very competitive, it does require a 25% match from the district. So if we were to get the full $500,000, we would have to match $125,000. If that is the case and I can make this happen, I would obviously go back to you, once our E&amp;D is certified, to request that maybe we could fund it with that. It's a, it's a grant that we can use to start implementing all the safety and security issues that we've, were presented to us through our assessment through Homeland Security. You know, we're looking at more ballards. We're looking at the, in replacing the card swipe system, access system that we have right now. It's really archaic and it's very difficult for maintenance and management. Potentially, some of the walkie-talkies upgrading to some good quality two-way radios in the district. And it's all around physical safety. The issue we're having is my access to the federal websites. It's the feds. Nothing is fast. Everything is a long process. If I can get the access I need in time, I will submit right away. If I can't, it is an annual program, as long as funding's there. If we miss this deadline this year, we can always apply for it next year. But I'm doing my best to get the access that we need. That's it. I'll make sure I update you in July, whether it was success or whether it was...
Whether the one side opens.
Moved off.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Up next, we have facilities report. Facilities Director Scott Hebert, how are you this evening?
Good, self.
Good, thank you.
So the high school, a particular boiler company came in and diagnosed a bad circulator pump. This pump maintains the water level in the boilers. These boilers are steamed, so it's constantly using water and you've got to refill it to a certain level. So we're getting that repaired. The John Deere tractor is all set. I got a phone call this morning. It should be dropped off on Monday. Two weeks too late, but it's ready to go. We have a broken window on the lower learning center. That's going to be replaced on the twentieth of June. No students in the building, so. Hottnet Middle School, certain boiler company came in, replaced, they broke the sections down to diagnose what this boiler needs, and it needs all-new gaskets and O-rings. It's a, it's a big project. I showed, showed the photos. It's...
And the quote we got was just over $16,000.
Yes.
Which is unbudgeted. So we'll see where, it won't be done until next year, so we don't have to worry about it until this, for this fiscal year.
Yep. And let's see, what else? FM generator, they're coming in to replace the faulty transfer switch. Ironically, we lost power Wednesday morning at 1:00 AM. Had to come in. And none of the lights were on. So the generator was running, but the light didn't transfer to come on, so that's what that transfer switch does. So once that's done, we should be good. Previous power outage blew the circuit breaker on the ventilation system in the kitchen for the steamers and burners and exhaust. That was a bad circuit breaker, so that has been replaced. It's all set, up and running. JFK AFM slash MES. Boxes have been delivered so that the teachers can stop packing in anticipation of a move happens. So that's underway. And we also installed additional electrical outlets in the classrooms in the preschool. What had happened was we got cited for running extension cords that we shouldn't have been So, yeah, we got new outlets put in. It's good to go. We won't be blowing circuit breakers anymore in that section. Millville Elementary School currently getting quotes for new kitchen equipment. Joe and Chris and I will be meeting tomorrow to go over that. This is replacing items that can't be repaired. Associated Elevator diagnosed a bad power switch at the Millville School as well. So the elevator is out of operation, but that'll be up and running before anything. Fire pump was tested on Tuesday, and we had no issues with that. And that is all I have.
Any questions for Scott? Aaron?
So maybe it's not just for Scott, but do we have an update from the permit process for the water at Millville Elementary?
I reached out and heard from Peter. Let me pull it up here. He was helpful. He responded right away. He said that they met with Mary Jude. Contract's still in process. They've recently decided to change the contract format on all grant awards, so it sounds like it's a, it's a formatting issue, possibly including those already executed. But she wasn't too sure. Her team's working closely with McClure and Boston Office to expedite the permitting. April and May test results came in under their thresholds for all tests, including DBPs. That's the updating I got, from Peter this morning.
What was the original timeframe for the permit? Sixty days?
Sixty. I think it was May seventh, they said they, sixty days. Starting May seventh, I think it was.
And they said it was thirty days to install. Was it thirty days to install?
Two weeks to get the stuff and then...
Two weeks.
Like the money pit.
Two weeks.
That's no reference on the north. That was just, that's just a long day in the sun.
It sounds like the kids potentially still meet at July 31st date at this point, but depends on how long that new format.
Yep.
What it impacts.
Okay, just ask about the all-new O-rings and gaskets. Like, that's going to cost a large amount of money?
What building is that?
That's in, that's in this building right here. They got to take it apart, I understand, but is that part of, is that ever in a PM, you know, contract? Or is it just, they just give up?
So every year they come in. Yeah, every year they come in, they break down the boilers and clean them out and all that and make sure nothing's wrong. But I think it was November, we fired up that particular boiler, and it had a bad leak coming from underneath it. They thought maybe it was a cracked section, which would have been even more money if that was the case. And they're not even sure they can buy those sections anymore. So luckily, it turned out just to be the O-rings. And it started out, they were just going to do like a third of it, but once they broke it open and saw that other sections were leaking, it was like, might as well do it all at once and get it done.
So this, in a sense, this is a preventative maintenance, just because they weren't all that. So we're just changing them out in anticipation of future issues.
Yeah. And we also treat the water in the system, so it's not like it was, you know, corroded water or anything. It's just, it's from heating up, you know, heat contraction, expanding.
Just touching on that, that's, that's what, sixteen thousand was the quote?
Yes.
And did you, did we get a work order yet to get them moving on that? Because I think we should have that money, we should have that. I'd rather get to see that get done sooner than later.
Yeah, so we're waiting for materials that won't come in until after July first.
So I'd ask Scott to do that, that purchase order after July one, so we can get it into the next fiscal year.
Oh, got you.
As opposed to doing it now. But they are moving already. We already gave them the okay.
Oh, good. I was just thinking because of the, you know, sometimes you get stuck on parts.
Yep.
And, and then next thing you know, it's October, November.
Yeah.
You need that boiler.
So basically, that boiler hasn't run all year. We ran on just the other two boilers. Fortunately, we have three here, so I mean, any given day, there's no more than two boilers running.
That's probably why the seals, it probably doesn't run that often, the seals.
We do have a software that is supposed to alternate the boilers, so that they do constantly run.
All right. Oh, sorry, Aaron.
So I just, can I ask why we want to wait until after July first?
Because it won't be, it won't be done. We won't have it done this fiscal year, so the expense wouldn't fit to this fiscal year either way, because the service has to be completed before June 30th.
You can allocate, we can, we can earmark it.
Well...
Well, we could, we could...
I mean, there's pros and cons to both of that, but with, with our year-end forecast...
And encumber was the word.
With what you said is unbudgeted, would it be frugal of us to encumber something? Because otherwise, it's tied up in E&amp;D.
We, we could. We could encumber those funds this year and roll it forward. Actually, if, if they thought they could get it done by July 15...
That's what I was just going to say, or would it expediate the process?
Maybe we could even still get the full expense to be in this fiscal year. So we could do that.
Because going into next year, not being able to use it, might be, you know, if we weren't able to use it all of last year, if it's something we could be a little proactive on, and though we don't have any line item for this type of expense, I think I see it there that we could... I don't know. I'm just...
No, it's definitely something we could do. We could, if you'd like, I could carry that accompaniment forward over to the next year.
That way, it's not tied up in E&amp;D. If we let that go, it's rolling and locked up until, unfortunately, we have to pay to have it fixed.
Yep, yep. It's got to get done, so, okay.
Are we good?
More questions?
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Facilities use requests.
There's three requests. The first one is Group One. It's the BMR Music Department. They run a band camp every year. There's no, Mr. Schaefer does a great job. There's no issues here, so that's, that's an easy one. Should we do these all at once?
If there's no objection, we could probably do them all together. I think the other two, we just got an update on from the athletic director.
Yes, it is. It's exactly what it is.
I have a question on this one, though, the football ones.
The next one?
Just the two football ones.
Yes.
It's the varsity football coach requesting it, but it's 2-1-2 Enterprises?
Yeah, from what I understand, it's not, it's, it's not a school-run program. I guess from what Darlene was saying, we can't do certain things. I don't know all the details.
Yeah, so I'm just...
Yeah, so I'm just questioning the name of it, the Junior Charger Camp. That's a big gray area with MIAA.
And the group that it's falling under.
But it's, she said you, this isn't for the high school kids, is it?
No, the high school one's the preseason camp. There's three different things in here.
There's just, there's a big gray area right now with...
There's a preseason camp, and then there's a junior charger.
Because it's called Junior Charger, and it's, yeah, connected to...
I must have two of the same things.
Yes, but the coach can't put out to players, like, come to my camp, because if you come to my camp, you could be a better player, therefore making the team.
Can we make a motion to approve it as just junior camp?
It's just that word, it's just putting charger in there that I feel like we're...
I wonder, though, I don't know, I'm looking for Darlene's update, because I feel like the age group, does it make a difference if the age group is not the kids that would play?
It might be a varsity-only rule, which...
Isn't there a percentage requirement to, you can't have so many percentage of people?
Yeah, which is why, I know she said they were being opened up to other schools, and I just...
So the team is grades, I think this is it, though. So here's my question. Is the Charger Youth Football Camp on Darlene's update for grades four through seven?
Yes.
The Charger Youth...
It changes the group and how we charge, too.
So that would, well, because this is group three, which would be, he has the Chargers, right?
Yes.
But it doesn't, grades four to seven don't play on the team. Does that make it better? I don't know.
That might save it.
Okay.
Eight-10 through eight-13.
You want us to check that?
Crossroads.
Just to make sure, yeah.
What's that? The one in August also overlaps with band camp, and the band uses, obviously, the staff parking lot, so can we just advise them that that is going to be off limits?
Make an notation of that.
No parking there.
Is that why they don't have any issues over there?
They requested the football practice field, so they technically should be...
It's the practice field.
Back of the school.
Oh, is that back?
Yeah, it's just the practice field. That's correct.
Oh, that makes sense. I'll check on those, on that piece.
Still can make a note. I don't know if we want a motion to approve it pending, needing a name change, just so...
I would say, maybe table this until they get some clarification.
I'll tell you what, I'll take a motion to approve band camp. Motion made by Matt, seconded by Jane. All those in favor, sign, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. And so now we have, oh, they're both 212 Enterprises, huh?
Yeah, I think he'd be okay with taking the Chargers out, because the other one doesn't have it, and it's the same 212 Enterprise.
But our basketball camp, our summer basketball camp is run by...
By BMR.
It's Bimble.
Coach Inabali, isn't it?
He volunteers his time, but it's sponsored by Bimble.
Yeah.
But...
Bimble's the town league, yeah.
At the risk of putting...
I don't go with Bimble.
Well, and I think, but just because this was...
It's also called Charger Basketball Camp, though.
So maybe it's because it's youth. Those aren't, it's not...
So I'll make a motion to approve the request as submitted pending verification of legal use of the name.
Perfect. Second.
Cross-reference it with basketball, though, because I really think it says Charger Basketball Camp.
Well, we, your motion has these two football camps.
Correct.
Okay. Motion made by Jane?
Second.
Seconded by Tara. S. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I'll check that. Jason, you can check on that.
I have, just like, MSBA High School Building Project Update. During public forum tonight, both committees, the School Committee and School Building Committee separately, voted to move forward with grade seven through 12 configurations. So the School Building Committee will continue on with the preferred schematic report, which is due August 28th. So those are our next steps to complete the phase that we're at. And then just on a side note, we held the baseball banquet last week, and we held it at BMR, and I thought it was awesome that we were back in the school, having the kids, you know, in their school to do the banquet. Food Services did a great job providing food really fair price, and I think the kids liked it there. They played good football outside, so just ties in that community feel of the school. So I thought it went well.
Excellent.
And then, sorry, one more request. Just touching on the Millville Water System, I feel like, you know, processing those dates, we're going to be getting close to that July 31st date that was mentioned in a Board of Selectmen meeting a while back. Just, can we add it to the July 10th agenda to have an update?
Sure.
Okay.
And we're confirming that's July 10th, right, not July 6th?
Yes.
July 10th is a Thursday.
It's usually Monday.
It's usually Monday.
Monday, it's July 7th in the district.
Yeah.
On the district side, it says July 7th. We'll confirm getting the correct agenda date.
On the July meeting.
And that's our last meeting before the...
Yes.
The end of the month where that motion fell.
Okay. Anyone else for good and well, or School Committee Forum?
Just want to mention that the marching band has started their season in June to, that lasts all the way through November. I attended the first night, the other night, and it's probably going to be one of the biggest marching bands we've had since, in about ten years.
Nice.
Almost ten years, so they're really excited for it, and wish them the best of luck.
Okay, thank you.
Of the fall seasons, Darlene did not mention it, but family ID registration is open for all fall sports. I know all of our sixth and seventh graders were introduced to all of the fall sports offerings, so hopefully we can get numbers up on our sports teams, too.
Anyone else? I'd like to thank the School Building Committee, a joint meeting earlier this evening. I'd like to also thank all the Special Olympic Award competitors and recipients. That was very, very nice for the second annual special. Thank you, Jill, and all the administration and parents that assisted. I'd like to thank Eagle Scout Kevin Burgess for his commitment to maintaining the deck out back, and the retirees, all the five of them tonight, and I don't understand how, like, Patty Bushery can be retiring, when she, like, graduated a year before me, or two years before me, but I'd like to thank them. And with that being said, we have one more. Oh, thank you. We also have, on behalf, this is our superintendent's last meeting with us, so on behalf of the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee, would like to present you with this certificate of appreciation and recognition of your outstanding leadership, unwavering dedication, and tireless commitment to the students, staff, and families of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Your vision, integrity, and service have left us a lasting impact on our schools and community. As you embark on your next chapter, know that your contributions will not be forgotten. With heartfelt appreciation, we thank you for your years of service, presented to you on June 12th.
Thank you.
2025. Thank you. And more importantly, you will have to honor this card from the School Committee, can open it up there.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for your years of service, and it's been a pleasure working with you as a selectman, as a school committee member, and you came into this community with a super town meeting, the first one. Should have been a sign right then, and you didn't run. You stayed for seven years, so. So now, folks, we're going to go into executive session, and we will adjourn, we're not going to come back to the TV. We'll adjourn, coming out of this executive session, so I'll ask for a motion to go to executive session and not return to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel. Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Tara. Roll call, Jane?
Yes.
Erin, Carrie?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.